Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there also, there is also a physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously. The New Market Town Hall Auditorium. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting in person, in by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. Excuse me, we are utilizing Zoom for the electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through the following website: Or phone number: 1-646-558-8656 And password: 9552718105. This meeting is also to be aired on New Market Channel 13 for those wishing to watch on their TV and streaming at www.nuemarketnh.gov/channelfourteen. And B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Board at C) Provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-3617, extension 1321, or email at channelfourteen@newmarketnh.gov. D) Adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Alrighty, so roll call. Val Shelton.
Present, alone in the room.
Sarah Finch.
Present and alone.
Jane Ford.
Present and alone.
Jamie Bruton. Jamie Bruton, I don't see her on the screen. Scott Blackstone.
Present and alone.
Bill Doucette.
Present and alone.
Eric Bodeman, present and alone. Mikael Zahorek.
Present and alone.
Ted Sealy.
Present and alone.
Okay, seeing that Jamie is not here, Mikael, I'll appoint you to sit in officially on this meeting. So the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next is public comments. Is there anybody from the public that has any comments on anything that is not on the agenda for tonight? I don't hear anybody speaking up, don't see any hands raised, so I will close the public comment at 7:05. Next is review and approval of minutes of the 12:08 20 meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
About to find out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's that are for 26 2021.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That was from last I'll amend my motion.
Yes. 126, I'm sorry, yes. 21. Val, you've made the motion, is her second.
This is Jane, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Have one change? Yeah, on line 133, 134, that should read Val Shelton said they should work with Diane. The applicant, applicant should be working with Diane, not the planning board.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Alright, actually before we move on, I saw that Jamie Bruton just came into the meeting. Are you there, Jamie?
He is. She's muted.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, Jamie, are you by yourself?
My, my son's in the room, but he's not paying attention.
Okay, thank you. So, um...
Eric, did you get Sarah?
Excuse me?
Sarah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Mikael, Jamie's sitting in, Jamie's here, so you will not be sitting in for this one.
Okay.
Officially. Okay, now for the minutes, for vote for approving the minutes. Did anybody second that? Oh, we did, we talked about it. Val?
Aye.
Sarah Finch?
Aye.
Mikael Zahorek?
Aye.
Ted Sealy?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
Scott Blackstone?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up on the regular business is request for review and comment by planning board on the issuance of a building permit and driveway access for a single-family home on Neil Mill Road, a Class 6 road pursuant to RSA 674:41. Request from Mr. John Tyson, who has a purchase and sales agreement for 75 Neil Mill Road in New Market, New Hampshire, at TaxMap R7, lot 1. Is, I think we should start by having the applicant or its representative just walk us through what your plans are, please?
Sure, thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Chris Albert, owner of CSA Environmental Consultants, working with John Tyson, the prospective owner of the lot. With him tonight, I have his wife Sue Spinelli, and I believe the, his daughter Julie, who will actually be the owner of the property in the house, is in attendance for tonight. Again, I thank you for meeting with us tonight. What I've submitted at this point is, again, a letter of authorization from the current landowner, Chris Gazano. Kind of the purchase and sale agreement, and good faith that know that, that John Tyson is actually purchasing the property. We do have the approved septic plan for the lot, for the house. And the key really is the proposed driveway plan, which we've submitted, entailing approximately 785 linear feet of upgrade of the existing woods road to a 14-foot-wide gravel driveway. We've also kind of attached the draft agreement, again, it's something that we've got a long road ahead, that was, we all know. But kind of a draft agreement of what kind of the town of Epping's format is for such a being. I guess, I guess the key really is, is tonight is really kind of an informational meeting with the Board to kind of set some groundwork on how we should move forward. I understand we're probably gonna wanna have a public comment hearing and probably a site walk with the Conservation Commission. And I believe Dwayne Hyde from Selt is in attendance tonight, too. Again, we wanna have this transparent and open to the public as far as what Mr. Tyson and his daughter plan to do with the property. And again, I would kind of leave it up to Diane and the Chair on how we proceed at this point. Thank you.
Did we lose Eric?
Yeah, I think he froze up, the Chairman, yeah.
I'll wait till he comes back.
Okay.
Um... So, does, does the Board have any questions for the applicant at this point?
You presented Val, Bill Doucette, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Val, may I ask a question?
Yes, you're, you have the floor.
You presented a design plan, I don't see a professional engineer stamp on that.
No, if that's something that you wish to have, we can, we can have that done. Again, this is a draft review. I believe Diane was, was thinking of having it brought through local engineering peer review at your, at that point. So we figure out what, what you guys want, you know, as far as far department, police, local review, that's fine.
I just think that you're probably required to have a professional engineer design something like this.
I'm sorry, everybody, I lost connection for a minute there.
Yeah, we saw you freeze up a little bit.
Man, hey, if I can jump in, go ahead, Val, I'm sorry.
I just opened it up for a board questions to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay, I have, I actually, Val, I have a few questions. One, I guess, similar to Bill's, from the plans, look like the survey was done by a builder?
No, it was done by Josh Manning, who's Lewis Builders, he's a licensed land surveyor.
Oh, okay, it said Lewis Builders, okay.
Oh, yeah, but that's, that's their company name, but yeah, Josh Manning. Land surveyor with.
Okay, okay, good. Check your plan at the driveway, the entrance, where you have the turnaround for the fire truck. The plan submitted shows that the fire truck doesn't make the turn based on the, it doesn't say on the driveway as it, as it's laid out right now. So that's, that's one thing to check.
Are you looking at the, the, the approved septic plan, or the?
No, the plan, the other plan.
Oh.
See, I think it's the second page at the, at the, at the property. The arcs of the tires of the fire truck go off the proposed gravel.
Yeah, I thought I moved that wall back a little bit, but yeah, we can, we can correct that.
And that's, I mean, that's a minor thing. The other thing, the other question I had is, you have at least one culvert. Has anybody flagged wetlands out there at any point?
Yeah, I'm also a wetland scientist, I did flag the one wetlands behind the cemetery. There's no wetlands, and the, the culvert that we were posing is more of a flow equalization culvert for that 100-year storm event. There's no drainage path through the piece.
Okay.
But, you know, in, in order to just kind of preserve a driveway with impervious cover that's there now, we wanted to throw in a flow equalization culvert.
So that's not connecting any wetlands?
No.
Okay, okay, good, alright. That's all the questions I had. Go ahead, Val.
Just a question for the applicant. Have you, I mean, we've already, we've visited this situation in the past pretty extensively. Have you reviewed the file at Diane's office relative to the engineering plans that the Board had given comment on prior?
We've, I haven't, I hadn't had the access to the plans, but I do have all the documents from the Conservation Commission, Mark West, the Planning Board, and different, all the different letter reviews. But again, I think the other plan was a quite lengthy driveway for two accesses. Again, we're just looking for one short access of, of the 875 feet.
Valerie, we did not get full engineering drawings for the road upgrade. We did not.
We did not receive them.
Not, but we had, in the file, there's a very preliminary layout that the former owner had provided showing how he wanted to lay out his lot, but we didn't get into anything within the driveway or the right-of-way. And, as you know, the, the project just sort of went south, shall we say, with the economy in the late 2008 period, and, and we never heard back from the developer. There is not, we do not have engineering drawings per se of the driveway, but we do have a sketch plan, a layout of his, what he had envisioned for the property. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Val, you have any more questions at this point? Any other Board members have questions? I don't see anything. So Diane, I guess at, at this point, I, I certainly feel comfortable if they provide more information and then we go through the formal process and let the public comment and whatnot, and, you know, that's my opinion. I guess I'll throw it out there for the rest of the Board, what's, how's the Board feel? And then I'll open it up to, if there's any abutters or interested parties that wanna say anything at this point, we'll, we'll let them say something. Bill, go ahead.
Were abutters notified?
No.
Not for tonight's hearing.
No, but if they're already on, if they're already on the, if anybody know about it and they're here on the meeting, I'll let them talk.
So... People just happen to know about it?
Correct.
Yeah, this is strictly informational, just to kind of get rolling. Again, we appreciate the planning board taking, you know, your time to meet with us, because again, we've gotta start somewhere, and this is kind of the start of the project, and now we need to kind of set up a formal process as far as public notification. You know, we'd wanna have, you know, a hearing date scheduled. I assume sometime in March, looking at for a time to do a, a site walk. I wanna try to schedule a time where Julie lives in Vermont, where she can actually come down, the owner of the property, actually walk it with, you know, all interested parties, abutters, Selt, and then the other, the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, so we can get some good change and also get a chance for some of that snow melt to hopefully disappear between now and then, so we can get a better, you know, lay of the land.
Alright, any other Board members have any questions or comments? Is there anybody else on the call or the line that would like to speak to this subject?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to introduce myself, if that's alright. My name is James Scully, and I am the attorney for the applicant, so I'll be working with Mr. Albert and the applicant throughout this process. So if I can provide any answers to any questions, I'd be happy to do so as well, but for the record, I call attention out this evening, and thank you all for your time.
What law firm are you with, Mr. Scully?
I'm with Morris Law Firm out of Hampton, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anybody else?
This is Patrick Reynolds, Winslow Drive, New Market. As, as the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, I think it would be appropriate for us to have a hearing to review this. I would, I would like to do it in March, because we're meeting this week, so that doesn't really give us very much time to review any plans that have been submitted. But I think that would give us an opportunity to, to review it as a group and also just get questions, or if anyone from the public has questions, because yes, we are. We hold easements on all the abutting property in New Market. Obviously, there are lots of other abutters in new fields, primarily Selt, but, but in New Market, I believe the only abutter easement-wise is the Conservation Commission.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Anybody else?
I'll just, this is Dwayne Hyde. If I could just introduce myself, I'm with the Southeast Land Trust, and I've attended a site walk with Chris Albert and the, one of the proposed owners. And we will provide more formal comments on the application, but we're waiting additional information and, and the opportunity. But I wanted to at least introduce myself from the Southeast Land Trust.
Thank you very much. Okay.
I believe there is someone present in the auditorium, or I thought there was earlier.
Diane, I was there and I scooted home, so now...
I couldn't make out who that was. Okay, thank you, Arlen.
Yeah, I, I do have some comments, but I'm not sure if they're more worthy of the public comment period or, or now, so I just, I didn't wanna waste time if, if there'd be an opportunity to speak in public.
Whatever you feel comfortable with, Mr. Chafee, thank you for...
Okay, just quickly, you know, the South Gateway concept is something that Diane has and I believe the Planning Board as well as the Council explored the benefits of community access and economic impact, basically around the rail trail, Rockingham Rail Trail. But I just wanted to call to attention that Neil Mill Road and Old Lee Road are connectors to that system, and they're an integral part of that recreational ecosystem, including year-round walkers, dog walkers, runners, cyclists, and in the wintertime, snowmobiles, such that the town even installed auxiliary parking on, on Neil Mill Road in anticipation of that. But what's interesting is, Rockingham Planning Commission did a trail count on their Rockingham Recreational Trail, the feeder to this Neil Mill area on a 25-day period in June of 2020, and there were over 3,500 in-and-out visits, recreational visitors during that period. So cyclists, walkers, et cetera, so about 140 a day, and I can tell you anecdotally, Old Lee Road and Neil Mill Road that end sees a lot of activity because it's the gateway to the burn trail extension with Selt and the Otis Trail. So, you know, it's, it's an important part of the recreational structure, and I, I think we should take that into account. And I'll have more to say during the public comment, I just wanted to throw that out there. And then a couple of quick questions, in case our audience is larger than just those on the Zoom call. Does the town have a Class 6 road policy currently?
No, we do not.
Okay. You're aware that many towns do, and they, they, they spread, they cross the spectrum from here's the formalized policy to we discourage development on Class 6 roads. When in the process does the Conservation Commission get involved with this?
We have been in touch with them, and when we have our public hearing, we will send a courtesy notice to them.
Great.
Invite the members to participate, and of course, Patrick's here this evening.
Yep, and, and so, yep, and so I understand, finally, and then I'll, I'll, I'll jump off the soapbox. So I understand, should the planning board approve this plan, the ultimate disposition lies with the town council, correct?
That is correct. The planning board's role in this process is to review and provide comments. There was a formal request provided to the town council and the town manager, and he had, the town manager suggested that we go through our process first, input from the public, formulate some recommendations, and present those in a formal packet to the town council so they can take action.
That sounds like a great process. Thanks for indulging general public and recreational folk.
Of course.
Thank you, Arlen.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to speak to this subject? Okay, so I guess Diane, going forward, they will submit a formal package to you for your review for completeness?
Yes, and this is a rather unique application before us, because typically we review site plans, subdivisions, and this is really the first time that we've reviewed a request to build on a Class 6 road, which comes under its own statute in the RSAs. So we will be working closely with our own legal counsel. I have been in touch with John Ratigan, who will be advising us through the process. So, we hope that, you know, we wanna try to get as much input as possible from the public, and I have put together some preliminary just comments, and there is a staff report that's on the town's agenda. I apologize, I didn't have copies to provide to everyone, but it just provides some background information on Class 6, what the applicant's request is, and that indeed, this is a major policy decision for the town in New Market. And that, going forward initially, because of the extent of interest in this subject from a number of abutters, stakeholders, and conservation-minded folks in the community and recreation users, we really would like to schedule that public hearing shortly. And we do have a meeting coming up, March 17th, and the deadline is coming right up now, the end of February on the 23rd. So hopefully that will give the applicant and their team an opportunity to put together some more information. I know that Mr. Albert has been working on getting information together for that process. And we need to obviously notify abutters, and we'll need to have a list of those abutters for application notification. And we'd like to broaden the list as much as And we'd like to broaden the list as much as possible to include stakeholders, such as Arlen Chaffey had mentioned, just the interest in trail use in that particular area, and the importance of tying in with other projects in New Market. So I think we wanna, you know, try to contact the stakeholders who use the trail, who have an interest in this, so that we can hear from them. And of course, we've already spoken to the folks at Selt. And I've done some outreach to the town of New Fields, because of course, this property, as you know, is on the town border. And New Fields has been very active in working with Selt and securing conservation easements and lands in this vicinity. And they've actually, from what I understand, have designated a recreation trail on the piece that extends into New Field. So we certainly want to include their input in this process. And they're, because of the close proximity to the town line, I would like to, you know, incorporate, include them in our, our notification, so we can be as broad as possible in bringing all the players to the table, so we can work through this issue. And the second part, as Eric, I think, alluded to, we would like to forward this to our local technical review committee, which includes town department heads, the fire chief, the police chief, all the folks who have an interest in this, public works department. But also, we wanna have input from our professional engineer to assure that the road design and detail is adequate and it's, it's being properly addressed. For, and I, the cost of those reviews, if you will, under the state RSAs and under our own regulations, would then be passed on to the developer or the applicant in this case. So I think the goal is to get as much information as possible, so we can make an informed recommendation and forward that to the town council and take it to their, their process and be able to have some kind of an outcome that hopefully is broad enough to include the vast interests that are being affected by this, or could be affected in the future. So that is my recommendation, it's outlined. A copy of my staff memo is on the town's website under the agenda, if you would like to review that. Thank you. Um, do you have any questions at this point for me?
Does anybody have any questions for Diane?
No, I'll, I'll pull the information and, you know, get back to you, Diane, as far as the, the February twenty-third Semedo, you know, what we're missing. And then have you, does it state what you want for an escrow yet at all, or?
What we typically do is submit the plans to our consulting engineer for review. We work with two engineers, is one, we also work with Wright Pierce Engineers, who assist us in other projects in town, so it hasn't really been decided yet, you know, who will be our engineer in this project. But I think we're interested in having somebody who has some sensitivity, if you will, to some of the environmental issues that are being raised by this, and that we can hopefully, you know, work through those with someone who can come up or work with us to come up with a low-impact solution to the problem, that's my hope anyway. So, anyway, I see that Mr. Doucette has his hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Diane.
Yeah, go ahead.
Diane, is this one of the situations where our regional planning is learned as well?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. There is a provision in our RSAs where the Regional Planning Commission reviews projects of regional impact, and there's a special process involved with that. And of course, New Fields is not in the Stratford County or Stratford Regional Planning Commission, it is in Rockingham County, but it's not part of that Rockingham Planning Commission jurisdiction. So I think we'd like to hear from both Rockingham and Stratford, and we will, if the board feels that this is a project that is worthy of regional impact, include them and involve them in the process as well.
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
So because we don't have a specific application or application process for this particular item, does the applicant have any questions as to what the expectation is in your package to be submitted? Because obviously, our role is to call a public hearing, which is what I think the board is requesting, and to, to hear your proposal and then to provide comment to the council. So do you have any questions as to, you know, what, what I'm hearing the, the town planner is looking for?
No, I, I, I think we're, I think we're all on the same page, you know, this is uncharted territory, it's not a site plan, it's not a subdivision, it's, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a driveway on a Class VI road, falls under a six-seventy-four doctrine, uh, you know, through town council approval with planning board endorsement, non-endorsement type of scenario. So like, I think it's something where, you know, we're all gonna huddle together and hopefully work through this, and, and, you know, everyone would be, will be happy at the end. And, and to, you know, work with all the different agencies, the land use people. I, I think we have a good client who's a good land steward that, that the town of New Market and the abutters will be happy with. So I'm, I'm pleased to move forward, you know, with the people I'm, I'm working for, you know, with the town of New Market on a good project. So hopefully, it'll come to fruition and meet everyone's expectations.
Okay, so is, is it, is it, is it your expectation, Chris, that you, you will have everything in, on the twenty-third in time for the March seventeenth meeting?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not, I mean, it's, you know, we'll, we'll work to that, to that objective. I mean, I don't think, I, I think we're almost there, I think whatever I's and T's that, that Diane and the, the planning people want are, are off of what, you know, what we have.
Okay.
And please forgive me, but I said March seventeenth, it's actually a Tuesday, so it'd be March sixteenth. And I also wanted to mention to the board members and to, you know, the interested public that we've put some information up on our website under tonight's agenda, including the RSA that, that Chris is mentioning, and some questions and answers about Class VI roads and what they are, and who has control over them, and maintenance responsibilities. It's, it's a good put out by the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And, and as time goes on, we'll probably be putting more information up on the website so that people can access that as resource material.
So I guess one question for you, Diane, and, and the, and chairman and the board, if, if we have the March sixteenth hearing, would it be your thoughts to have a site walk before or after that date? I just, I'm just trying to get a feel of the progress and how this would unfold. So I don't think a planning board decision, public hearing or non-public hearing, can be, really be fit finalized without having that site walk. So I'm just, I'm just trying to look at dates, so if we had this March sixteenth hearing and then had a, a site walk afterwards, would we still have a chance for another planning board hearing in March, or are we into April? I'm just trying to get a chronological time put together in my mind.
Chris, we only meet once a month.
Okay, that's, yeah.
So it would be April, so, you know, I don't know if the weather's gonna permit a, a site walk that's gonna be much help, you know.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, just asking.
Yes, no, understood, understood. I certainly have no problem having one before the meeting, if weather conditions permit, and we can properly notify everybody and things like that, but I, I'm, it'd be difficult to do.
Okay, thank you.
So any board members have any questions or any objections to moving forward with a public hearing? I don't see anybody. Okay, alrighty, so, thank you, we will schedule a public hearing for March sixteenth. That's the goal. And Chris, I know you and your team will be working with Diane to get her information, and we'll see you in a little bit more than a month.
Thank you very much, have a good evening now.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Alright, do any, anybody have any new business? I don't see anybody raising their hand. Any old business, Diane? Diane, you're muted, I think.
We filed our regulations, floodplain regulations with the State Office of Strategic Initiatives, and we filed those in time, and so the new floodplain maps, in effect, they went into effect on January twenty-ninth. And as far as I know, they're doing what we have to make sure that we meet the eligibility, which I don't believe there's gonna be any problem with, but I just wanted to give you an update on that. And I've also put the water resource plan that we adopted in November, I've put that up on the webpage, or website for, under the master plan for the benefit of the public. And I think the, the Planning Commission is gonna be writing an article about it, where we've called upon Mikal to provide some comments, and he has done so. So we'll be looking forward to seeing that in their next newsletter, thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else have any old business? I have nothing new. Any committee reports? Nobody's raising their hands. Planner's report, that was kind of your report you just did, Diane? Perfect. Alright, and nobody has anything else, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Do you want to make a motion?
Second.
Will call?
Yeah, it looks like Eric's frozen. Bill Doucette?
Yes.
Jane Ford?
Yes.
Apparently, I have a stuffed animal.
No, it's Eric.
Yes.
Bob Blackstone?
Yes.
It's Ely?
Yes.
Vera Finch?
Yes.
Yimi, Bruton?
Yes.
Eric, are you back with us? He's not. Okay, meeting adjourned, everyone have a good month.
Yeah, thanks.
Bye.
You too.